Right, good evening and welcome to the February 25th Bloomington Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning and transportation issues. Some of the items the Planning Commission has final authority for. Tonight, the two items that are before us will go to City Council. One is a consent item and the other is a public hearing. Tonight, again, we have a total of two items and minutes. Before we start, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay Glenn, if you could start us out as usual for our umpteenth time in a virtual environment.
Sure, Mr. Chair, just a second, let me bring something up. All right, so tonight is the Planning Commission's 21st remote meeting since the pandemic began. And even though we're remote, we have just two people here in the chambers. Commissioners, applicants and the public are all outside the chambers, but you can definitely still call in and participate. Item one and item two are public hearings. So just call the number on the screen, 1-888-742-5095, and then enter the conference code And when you call in, you'll be linked to the meeting and you will hear the meeting going on, but then when the Chair opens the public hearing, the operator will touch base with you at that point and you'll have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard. And just for those who aren't familiar with the process, typically the staff will give a staff report and then the Planning Commission members may ask staff of any questions and then we'll move on to the applicant for anything they may have to add before taking a pause and asking the operator to see if there's anybody online for any questions from the public. And then after that, the public hearing is complete, the City or the Planning Commission will close the public hearing and move on to discussion about the item. So tonight, our first item is 7601 Auto Club Road and 11245 Bloomington Ferry Road. Mr. Pease, do you have a staff report for us?
Yes, let me share this screen here to get this started. Thank you Chair, Planning Commission. This is a Type 3 preliminary and final plat. It's going to create three lots out of two existing lots at the properties shown. And again, if anybody's watching, there is the number and the conference code which you would call in to provide testimony. This has been a lengthy process for this property owner. It all started when the property owner came in and wanted to rebuild the 60-year-old home in the location that my cursor is showing now. The red is showing the existing property lines. And what's unique about this is they had a house, this again, built legally in the 50s, we had a house in this location which is occupied. We have the larger house, so we had two dwellings on one lot. That made this a legal non-conforming use. And in order for them to change the larger house, they had to tear down the smaller house to remove the non-conformity. After a great deal of discussion, we determined maybe the best opportunity, and the applicant did agree, to look at plating the property. So there really isn't going to be any change in the number of units. There will only be three lots with three units, where there used to be two lots with three units. The property owner does own all, both the properties before. He owns the historic home down here, this is a Chambers house, has an easement granted over U.S. Fish and Wildlife land when U.S. Fish and Wildlife acquired this property back in 79. And this is primarily a bluff area. But the other thing we looked at is, again, the red line being the existing property line, there was actually a shed over the property line. The driveway was over the property line. And so there's a lot of non-conformities that we encouraged the applicant to consider replating for, just to remove the issues. After consideration, we have the blue line, which is the new lot line encompassing the smaller house. The historic home is basically unaffected. This is a very steep slope on the west side of the new line. There's going to be little or no impact simply because of the slope here. And then the remaining property would belong to the primary holder, again, where the applicant wants to construct a new home. The orange line, and many of you went through the Minnesota Valley watershed district change, the orange line is that protection line. And one of the things we looked at is where should this eastern line be to make sure that this was actually rebuildable, should they want to rebuild this house? The yellow dots are septic tanks. These two are currently on septic. It's pretty difficult without a lift station to connect to the system. The sanitary sewer is way over in this location. This house does gravity feed. So there's a lot of complexities with this property, but working with staff, we believe that the applicant has a code-compliant subdivision, cleans up a lot of non-conformities and creates a nice clean property for the future for all three dwelling units. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Pease. Any questions from Planning Commission members for Mr. Pease? Not seeing any questions, Mr. Pease. Is there anybody or is the applicant online at this time, Mr. Pease?
Yeah, the applicant stated earlier in an email that if you have questions, he's glad to answer them. He doesn't necessarily have to do a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant from Planning Commission members? Not seeing any questions for the applicant. This time we'll go ahead and open public hearing. Mr. Pease, is there anybody online at this point for this application?
There are no callers other than the applicant online.
All right, thank you. Commission members, seeing that there are, that the applicant doesn't have anything specific for the Planning Commission and there are nobody from the public that entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Albrecht?
So moved.
And looking for a second, Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And, oop, Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes, public hearing is now closed. Yes, Mr. Pease?
Chair, this is Landell. If I may, I just had somebody enter the inter-call line. Can I check to see if they are wanting to speak on this item? It just came in as you guys were closing the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Pease, and if they do care to speak to this item, I'll need a motion from the Planning Commission.
I'll ask them. The phone number ending in 0874, were you calling to testify on item one?
Oh, no, Landell, this is John Gibbs, the applicant.
Oh, well, let me check the other one.
0874, that's mine.
Okay. Okay, caller 0429, were you calling to testify on item one?
No, I'm calling in on the next item, Opportunity Housing. Thank you.
Thank you much. Okay, proceed Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pease. All right, Planning Commission members, seeing that the public hearing is now closed, is there any discussion on the item? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just have to say this property seems very unique, obviously with the historical nature. So I appreciate that staff looked at both the historical nature of the property, the legal non-conformities, you know, we talked about the septic tank as well as the bluff protection. I think they've come up with a nice solution. So overall, I think, I just appreciate the staff looking at kind of all of the variables that go into it and I think I'll be very much in support of this application.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Any other Planning Commission members that have any comments on the application in front of us? I would also support your comments, Commissioner Goldsman. I think this is a great solution to the non-conformities that were existing on the property. So seeing no further discussion from Planning Commission members that entertain a motion? Commissioner Goldsman?
I can, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In case PL 2021-5, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat of Gibbs addition, creating three lots from two lots located at 7601 Auto Club Road and 11245 Bloomington Ferry Road, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached in the staff report.
All right, we have a motion in front of us. Is there a second? Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second in front of us to approve or recommend approval of a preliminary and final plat of Gibbs addition, creating three lots from two lots located at 7601 Auto Club Road and 11245 Bloomington Ferry Road. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes. That item will now move forward as a consent agenda item to the March 8th City Council meeting. All right, we'll take a minute here just to make sure that our operator has the opportunity to see if there are any additional people online before starting item number two.
Chair, at this time, there's nobody else other than the caller I had talked to read previously.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pease. All right, Mr. Palermo, can you give us item number two, Opportunity Housing Ordinance Amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight I'm here to talk about the Opportunity Housing Ordinance Amendments to, this is in Chapter 9, but you're seeing it because a lot of these will affect how you apply the zoning code in Chapters 19 and 21. So to give you a little history, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, this is our Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, which helps incentivize affordable housing development. And you get different incentives for different levels of affordability that you provide. It also requires that 9% of our units are affordable to some degree, or there is a pay, sorry, I mean, a fee in lieu option if you don't provide those. So in 2018, Dataless and Bay Area Economics kind of studied what the economic impacts are for housing in Bloomington and its new housing development, what those affordability needs are, and they created this Nexus Study for which the ordinance was based upon. It was first adopted in February 25th, 2019, and it, we had a six-month kind of period of education and refinement and working with developers to kind of implement. We amended it before it went into full effect in August 5th to kind of clean up some items that we had found. And then in September of 2019, it went into full effect and we've been applying it ever since. We're here to kind of give an update, further incentives that we found that might be useful. Some further background, I've included here, income limits. So our incentives are tied to both how many affordable units, the percentage of the building, as well as the affordability level provided. So we have moderate income, which is about 80% of area median income. So this is the median income for the metro area, this applies to Bloomington. Department of Housing and Urban Development comes up with these area median incomes and it ties to a lot of different funding sources. So this is why we use these numbers. Low income, which is applicable, would be 80% to 50% of area median income. Very low income is 30% to 50% of area median income. And if you're a household with less than 30% of the area median income, you're considered extremely low income. So to give you a little reference, this is the 2020 income limits. And as you can see, they're kind of great, they're scaled by your household size. So if you're a single person, you're over here on the one category. We typically, when we're talking in generalities, use a family of four as our kind of baseline. So the proposed amendments really kind of fall into three different buckets. We've got new incentives that we've developed, we've got some modifications to existing incentives and some procedures, and then the rest are really just minor edits and clarifications and cleanup items that kind of help with the readability of the ordinance. So I'll start with the new incentives. And this one, it's in an existing section, but I really wanted to call it out as a new incentive. So this new section on 9.15 would allow council to apply these incentives to projects that are fewer than 20 units. So currently, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance applies to developments with 20 units or more. This gives a little bit more flexibility if there is a project that maybe is 19 or, you know, lower, that they find that it is in the public interest. So here's a little example of what one of those smaller buildings might look like.
And Mr. Chair, just to add on to that a little bit, that would be at the developer's option. If they wanted to participate in the incentives, they would not be required if they had fewer than 20 units.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. And then we are, to add in a few new incentives, we kind of restructured the numbering a little bit, so we have 9.16.02. And this is a site area reduction, and these next four are very similar in how we are applying it. So it's a 10% reduction in site area, if 9% of the units are affordable at that low income level. It jumps up to 25% if 9% of the units are affordable to very low income, and up to 50% of the site area reduction for 9% of units affordable extremely low. I want to call out that we've added to these sections some language to kind of cover if we find that it would cause harm. We wanted to be able to say, well, this reduction is too much of a reduction and it might cause an issue, so we won't allow this. So site area reduction might not be much of an issue, but you can see in some of these it might. So similar incentive with site width reduction, a 10% width reduction for low income, 25% reduction at very low income, and a 50% reduction of site width is available at extremely low income. And then impervious surface coverage. So this is where that kind of stopgap or that ability for us to say, no, this is going to be harmful, we won't approve this, really kind of is applicable. Because you can imagine if we have too much surface area and it's going to cause an issue with our storm sewers, we don't want to improve a proven incentive. So we kind of, we've built that into these incentives now. So surface area reduction, 5% if you're providing 9% of affordable units at very low income, and 10% if you, for extremely low income. And then the final new incentive would be an open space reduction, very similar to the others, 10% for low income, 25% reduction for very low income, and 50% reduction for extremely low income. Now, these are more, these are existing incentives that are being modified. So in this one, it could kind of fall on that kind of clarification or slight tweak, but we are changing, we're proposing to match the state requirements for single-family home developers, a slight change in the area median income that's applicable. We had 110% area median income and the state uses 115%. But also in this section, we are changing, well, we are further clarifying that this is applicable to not only new construction, but converting buildings as well, such as hotel conversions. So this is something that we are seeing a lot of interest and we want to make sure that it's clear that these standards apply to hotel conversions as well. Now, this one, we changed quite a bit, the height density or the height bonus. You get an extra floor, an extra 10 feet above the city height limit map. We kind of had this complicated additional feed. If you had 50 feet, you get 60 feet. If you had 60 feet, you get 70. It's just convoluted language, so we're really simplifying it and just saying you get an extra story, 10 feet above the height limit map. So clean up there a little bit. Parking reduction, we're proposing adding another incentive for very low income or extremely low income households. If you're able to, and not only at the 9%, but it has to be at the 20%. So not only are you providing extremely low income, you're providing a larger amount of extremely low income affordability. You would be able to have a 50% parking reduction. Now, we want to kind of call out that this might change in the near future. It's on our work plan this year to kind of, to study our minimum parking requirements. So if that number, if our minimum parking requirements changes, obviously that changes how these incentives impact development. So well likely, we might end up having to change this or tweak this slightly as a result of that. So we just want to make you aware of that. Another parking incentive, we're changing our language from saying carports to unenclosed parking spaces. A carport kind of has a cover on top and now we're just saying unenclosed parking spaces. So it could be surface parking, further flexibility for this incentive. And we're adding a new reduction of, that would, or new incentive that would allow you to have 100% of required enclosed parking spaces to be unenclosed if there are 20% of the units are affordable to extremely low income households. So again, deeper affordability, extremely low income, and a larger amount than the minimum, We're also proposing to add to our list of alternative exterior materials. This is also one of the incentives to have engineered wood. And then storage space reduction, we'd add an additional incentive, reduction of 75% of required storage spaces if you can provide 20%. Again, higher than the minimum, 9% and affordable to 50% AMI or below, so that low income level. And then this one too, this is, we, this was kind of innovative at the time. We were proposing that you can have a grace period. If you had a resident whose income went above the rent limit, you would be able to continue to count that as an affordable unit for a grace period. And we had originally said five years. We're proposing to reduce that to one year. In all reality, all these projects have multiple funding streams and they have their limitations. So while we say you can have a five-year grace period if you're getting TISH, if you're getting bonding money, if you're getting low-income housing tax credits, all these have stipulations that you wouldn't be able to use that grace period. It was unique to Bloomington that we would allow that, but in all actuality, you wouldn't have been able to apply that. So we're still proposing to have a grace period of one year to give that extra time to help move that person either into a new unit or find another way, another unit to meet that requirement. And this is one of those things we'll continue to monitor and see if there is actually a demand from this. From what we've heard, there isn't much of a demand because of those multiple funding streams that just wouldn't, wouldn't, five years wouldn't be useful. But things are changing, so we'll continue to have that discussion with the development And then the rest are really more minor modifications or clarifications. We slightly, some slight modifications to our definitions that better align with state and federal funding. Our payment in lieu for affordable units, we're clarifying that it needs to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund before we pay it out. This is especially important for multiple phase development that might pay in and come out. We're clarifying that fees would be deposited in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We're capitalizing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund so that it, you know, it's the title, so it further clarifies. We're clarifying what expedited review process means. Really just means you're getting to the front of the queue, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do to speed up a review, but we can bring it to the front of the queue. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I mentioned that. And just a few changes to our objectives that talks about dispersion, how it's not just bedroom size, it's bedroom size, it's unit mix throughout the development. And then slight change to the Community Development Director can make recommendations to the City Council and other, to have any other reductions that might work. This was existing, but it's kind of clarifying that the Community Development Director must make a recommendation to City Council whether or not to support those further reductions that might be petitioned for. With that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Palermo. Commission members, any questions for staff on this? Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Palermo, question for you regarding the increased height allowance with these applications. Can you speak a little bit more to the practical implementation of that? I'm trying to think in my head of where applicants may be limited by height or what situation that's coming up. Is there a common situation where applicants are running into height restrictions or could you just expound on that a little bit?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, I don't think there's been a whole lot of demand as of yet. Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, I, I don't think there's been a whole lot of demand as of yet on this height bonus. Um, we, there still are limitations on, uh, the, uh, airport zoning ordinance. So there are some spots where we just won't, we can't allow it because of the airport. Um, but it allows for that greater density. So you can imagine if they free up more space for, um, outdoor activity space, like a pool or other activity space, you might better utilize your site more creatively if you can have that density bonus. So there, there's been some, I don't know if there's been a whole lot of demand, but I, you can see how it could be applicable and how, how be more creative, especially in tandem with some of these other, uh, reductions. If you're getting an open space reduction, maybe you need that, um, area to better utilize your land better to have that done, the higher story.
Commissioner Cookton, did that, uh, answer your question?
Uh, yes, it does. I have a second question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Palermo, if I recall when we were developing the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, it was pretty, um, we were sort of first, first in line to, to take something like this on. And I'm curious, do you know if our neighboring cities or sim- cities of similar size in this, in this area have started to develop similar, uh, policies and procedures for their cities?
Yep. Uh, Chair, Commissioner Cookton, uh, there are other cities that have similar ordinances. Um, uh, I believe Minneapolis and St. Paul both have similar ordinances. And I think, uh, St. Louis Park also has one. I know Brooklyn Park has some sort of inclusionary housing as well. Um, so while we're new, it, it's more and more are developing it and, and we're, we're not unique in this. And especially throughout the nation, this is fairly common to have some sort of, uh, ordinance like this. Um, but what's unique to ours is that we really do have that nexus study that Dataless and Bay Area Economics did to really ground us and give us, um, some legal justification for it, whereas some other communities haven't done that yet.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any further questions for staff from Commission members? Oh, Commissioner Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Palermo, um, my questions are around some of the site, uh, minimums, the reductions around space. So I don't have my exact notes up in here, but, um, we have the areas where we propose to offer, uh, for example, the out- outdoor space or whatever the term is, reduction. 50% seems a little bit aggressive to me for only 9% um, affordability at the extremely low rate. How did we come with those, I think it's 10, 20 and 50, I think were the allocations. Was that, I guess, where did we, um, assuming you've got sources and, uh, ideas from those developers or other cities or how do we get those numbers?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman, um, Glenn might be able to speak a little bit more to this as he was more involved with the development of it. But it's really born out of how do we get those extremely low income, uh, affordability rates? You know, that's the, the hardest, obviously you have the lowest income people that we're trying to provide affordability for. So you really have to figure out how do we fill in that gap? Uh, so that's really where it's born out of. We, we have plenty of developers that are able to provide that 80% and 70, 60%. But anything lower is much more difficult and that's where we're, where we're lacking in that. You know, the Met Council has provided numbers in our comprehensive plan on where, where we need to grow our affordability and really need to hit those extremely low income. And, um, this is what we're hearing will be, have the most impacted in these areas and maybe Glenn would speak more to that.
Mr. Markergard, do you have more to offer on that?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Roman, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the exact question.
Um, in, in short, um, it's in our, whether it's an open space, mostly it's in the open space reduction. Um, you know, we go all the way to 50% in exchange for only 9% uh, extremely low affordable. But then later, when we're talking about parking, we require 20% at that threshold in order to give on that. And I, um, I was just wondering how we came up with, uh, those, either the 10, 25, 50 or, uh, the decision only to stay at the 9%, which is kind of our bare minimum standard for the ordinance.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman and Mike, if you can bring up this slide that relates to that. There's not, uh, open space. There we go, open space reduction.
Yep, that's the one.
Okay. Yeah. So there are requirements per unit of a certain amount of open space. The thought was as a way to incentivize, uh, this, you know, the extremely low income units that, uh, this level of reduction, uh, would go a long way to doing that. Uh, to make the performers work, oftentimes you need more units, uh, per square foot of land area. And in that situation, we found on several sites, it's really hard to meet those open space standards. Uh, but with the incentive, it, it would be doable.
Okay. Um, it's my, my concern, yeah, I'll save that for the discussion part. Um, and then I, excuse me, one other question I had, Mr. Chair.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Roman.
Thank you. Um, the storage space reduction also, um, I'm wondering how we, um, uh, again, this, we moved to 75% if we get to, uh, 20%. And I'm just wondering again, where are, um, how we, how we came at that number versus other thresholds?
Mr. Markergard?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman and, uh, Mr. Palermo, if, if you could advance to that, uh, slide on the storage space. So this is an incentive that exists already. Um, what we're doing is increasing the incentive if a developer can hit that target of 20% at 50% or below. Uh, again, as, as Mr. Palermo mentioned, we've had a lot of success in that 60% AMI band. Uh, but we have not had as many units at the 50% or below. So we were looking at ways to further incentivize, uh, units at that level. And, um, basically by getting 20% of the units at that level or below, uh, we thought the higher level of flexibility would be warranted.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any further questions, Commissioner Roman?
No.
Okay. Any other, uh, Commission members? So, uh, yeah, Mr. Markergard, just following up on, on, uh, Commissioner Roman's question. So it, it's, it, what, what was the existing, I guess, uh, reduction at the, for, uh, storage space, uh, in the ordinance? I, I think what we're just trying to capture is what is that change, um, i- in, in these, uh, incentives uh, for the benefit of getting to the lowest incomes?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so the current standard is, uh, actually level across all affordability, um, targets. And that is a 50% reduction. If you have 9% at 60% or below, uh, 50% reduction. So this is adding in additional flexibility if you have the, uh, 50% or below, so a, a higher.
This adds an additional 25% reduction then to incentivize those 50% or below AMI. It's like, or 60%, sorry. All right. Um, so one of the other questions I have, Mr. Markergard, and just to, just to understand when we talk about site area ridic- reduction and site width. Um, if a little more explanation on that site area reduction, meaning the entire site can be smaller, um, i- is that correct?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chair, um, so each of our zoning districts has a minimum site area. So if you have a parcel that's below that, uh, minimum site area, you're just not able to, um, to redevelop it or to meet, if you were to rezone it, for example, um, the zoning district you might be looking to rezone to would have a, a higher, a minimum site area.
Sure. Okay.
So what we found is that we had sites, uh, that were smaller in size. The developers were interested in redeveloping, but they would not meet the minimum site area. Uh, for example, in the RM 50 district or a, a higher density multifamily district. So we were looking at a way to make these sites, uh, viable for redevelopment as housing and thereby provide more opportunities within the city for affordable housing.
Okay. And then just to clarify, site width doesn't necessarily mean setbacks. Am I correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair, that's correct. So that is purely the width of the site. So along with a minimum area requirement, there's also a minimum width requirement. And those two factors really interplay with one another. And we thought it appropriate, if we were to have an area reduction, to also have a, a width reduction along with it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Markergard. Uh, Commissioner Abdi, do you have a question or comment?
A question I'm thinking out loud. Um, as a planner, I've reviewed development site plans and I'm familiar with, uh, you know, overall site requirement for how the building is situated. I guess my question is overall for staff is if a developer were to come in for a substandard lot and they were to check on some of these desirable, um, uh, percentages that were interested in having affordable housing, one, can they get all of the incentives? And two, if they do get all of the incentives, would that eliminate for a need for a variance? Um, say if something for the, I don't know, the lot width, if they get a, a smaller lot size, uh, where the minimum is slightly larger and they were to propose the, uh, the percentage, um, excuse me, I'm stumbling here. The percentage, uh, they meet the affordable percentage needed to trigger that. Um, would they get that incentive in addition? Can they also get a variance to significantly reduce the setback if they were to build a slightly larger building but not give the city more affordable housing than what that incentive was triggering? I'm sorry, if, if that's not making, uh, sense, but I guess what I'm trying to figure out is they automatically get the consideration for the incentive if they were to come up with that percentage of affordable housing? Can they also additionally seek variances to significantly build a larger building should they desire to? Thank you.
Mr. Markergard or, uh, who would like to answer that one?
Sure, I can, I can take that, uh, Mr. Chair. So yes, a developer could apply for either additional flexibility or for variances above and beyond the incentives. The incentives, if they didn't need to go further than the incentives, there would be no need. They would just qualify because of the incentive. But like in this case, let's say the incentive was 50% and they wanted a 60% uh, flexibility. They could always seek that, uh, either through plan development flexibility or a variance process. So that's not prohibited. They still have that ability.
All right. Commissioner Abdi, does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay. One more question, uh, Mr. Markergard, and, and just to make sure we're, we're understanding it. So with the incentives, they theoretically are still coming through the Planning Commission. That is not then a permit, permitted use if they meet all the incentives that. And I'm understanding that because the City Council comment of finding in public interest. So that would still come through the process. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair, that's correct. Uh, the process, approval process would not change at all. It would still, uh, come before Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Markergard. Any other questions for Mr. Palermo or Mr. Markergard? Not seeing any questions and then since the city is the applicant, uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing now. Mr. Pease, do we have anybody online that would like to speak to this item? We'll give the operator some time to clarify that or to check on that.
Yeah, yes, I will contact them and put them live in just a moment.
Okay, thank you. And just a reminder that we do try and limit, uh, time just to make sure that if there are multiple people that they have, uh, opportunity to speak. And so, um, it, it will start with three minutes and go from there.
Chair, I can hear the speaker speak, but I can't hear him.
I, I believe we can hear somebody calling through. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Speaker. If you could please state your name and spell it for the record and then you can start your presentation.
Yeah, of course. Um, my name is Dave Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S., Dave like David. And I'm with McGough Development Group.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Higgins. And so just to make sure, we will start, uh, public hearing. I'm going to give you three minutes and then, uh, Mr. Pease, if we can.
On one portion of the proposed amendments.
Sure, Mr. Higgins, uh, just, I'm going to give you three minutes to start out with and then I'll check in with Mr. Pease to see if we have additional applicant or additional people from the public that would like to speak to this item. And if there aren't, I'll, uh, let you continue.
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Higgins.
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd like to speak to the amendments to Section 9.23 regarding the storage space reduction. And, um, both a request and encouragement from, um, both, uh, study across the metro, um, as well as, uh, experience with, uh, development and some actual data on the demand for storage and need for storage. Um, and would just note that across, uh, a few organizations that work in, in multiple markets, both locally and, and, you know, sort of regionally and nationally, um, unaware of other communities that, that mandate, uh, a base one-to-one ratio. Um, the encouragement and the request would be that the 75% reduction actually be allowed to apply to the base compliance of 9% of the units at 60% AMI. And, and the reason, um, I would cite that and, and request that or base that on is, um, you know, we, when, uh, when we built our project, the family apartments over at Bloomington in partnership with the city, that's a redevelopment district, uh, tip district. Um, you know, we looked at project costs and whether or not there were need for those in order to lease units and the building was the demand out there. Um, we worked with the property management firm, Gray Star, who is the biggest, um, manager of properties, multifamily properties nationally and beyond actually for multifamily. And also, um, local firm, ESG Architects and kind of surveyed across this metro. And kind of surveyed across this metro first, for examples. And what they found in recent projects was projects offering, on average, just under 25% with percentage usage at the time that they checked.
Mr. Higgins, are you there?
And when we presented the family project to the planning commission and the council back in 2018, we presented that information. Reason being, staff was hoping for us to and recommending for us to do the one-to-one ratio applicable elsewhere in the city. It turned out for an isolated window of time, the HXR district in which we were located actually didn't have the requirement. It's since been restored. But at the time, we worked with staff, we said we'd be willing to do 50% as a ratio. Our property is now just over 30% leased and the actual usage so far is similarly just below 15% at actually 14.96% of those new leases coming into the building are taking storage.
All right, Mr. Higgins?
And the way we look at it is if, if, if you're trying to encourage, anybody's trying to encourage affordable housing, obviously the ordinance is in place to offer certain concessions to save project cost.
Mr. Higgins? Mr. Higgins, if I can-
For requiring development-
Mr. Higgins, if I can just cut you off here for a minute, that's-
Additional space for something that, that the market is not showing demand for at that level seems to add cost unnecessarily.
Mr. Higgins?
And by way of example, at the family- Yep.
Yeah, if I can just cut you off, that's three minutes for now, but I just want to check in with the operator and make sure if we have anybody else that would like to speak, that we give them an opportunity. So can you hold on while I ask the operator to check for others?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pease, is there anybody else online?
There are no other callers at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Higgins, go ahead, I'll give you a couple more minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. Just recalling the discussion back then, there was an encouragement to push from the 50% that we were proposing and it designed into the project to push that up to 100%. And, and although the first 50% cost considerably more, to add the additional 50% of storage would have added $200,000 or so to the project. And again, at the present time, we're under 15% usage. And over the course of that early lease-up, the, the, the number floated somewhere between, you know, 10, 11, 14, almost to 15, but it's yet to hit 15%. So it just seems like a shame to be adding cost when even regular market rate projects are challenged by pricing. But when you're trying to create more affordable units, which we're in full support of doing, it's just an added cost. So candidly, we're looking at a project, an additional project right now and, and would be proposing a 25% ratio. And we, out of the box, are, are, you know, going ahead and complying with the 9% at 60 without hesitation. We did, we did 10% at 80 at the, at the family, but this next one, we would be down to 60%. It just, we, we, we don't see the, the benefit of adding cost for something there isn't demand for in the market. So I think you would get that much more attention for, for affordable in general if you continue to allow that to drop and allow the, the balance of city regulation encouraging something, but also leaving flexibility to the market to determine where demand is.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Just a question for you. I know you said currently at 15% usage. Do you, do you char, how much? Well, I'm not going to ask you, you probably don't want to talk specifics, but the, the market rate for storage there versus off-site storage, are they very comparable?
No. No, we're, we're, we charge $50.
Okay.
Off-site storage for the amount of space that we're providing would cost somebody considerably more than that.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that information. Commission members, any questions for Mr. Higgins? Mr. Higgins, did you have more to say?
No, just the strong encouragement. You know, we don't, we don't find, we don't find, and many of our peers across the metro and other markets don't find that that's a demand, it's not slowing down leasing. And certainly where we have found Bloomington to be incredibly competitive from the proactive, you know, initiative and sophistication shown by staff in so many respects and, and the strong partnering the city shows with the development community to, to really sort of make things happen and build community out there. It is, it is candidly an oddity to have a storage requirement relative to the rest of the market and it's an added project cost when you show up at City Hall that you wouldn't have in other communities. I just can, continue to encourage reconsideration of whether that's a benefit to the city.
I appreciate the comments, Mr. Higgins. I think we, we have that, that you would desire that the commission look at that higher level of reduction at a higher AMI.
Um, not, yeah, exactly. And, and at the 9%, at the, at the 60, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on topic. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pease, just one more check. Any additional individuals from the public that would like to speak to this item? Mr. Pease, are you there?
Thank you very much. He's pretty faint, but he's saying there's no other callers.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'm glad you, you heard that, Mr. Palermo. All right, planning commission members, seeing there's no additional members of the public that'd like to speak to this item, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Roman?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Motion passes, public hearing is now closed on this item. Planning commission members, discussion. There's a lot, a lot of information here for us to think about. Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, this is less of a comment than anything, but I do have a business relationship with the family project. But just stating for the record, I was unaware Mr. Higgins would be calling in and he and I had not spoken before this meeting on that particular aspect of his comments. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Cookton, I appreciate that. All right, others, you know, I think one of the things going back and, and looking at when we put the opportunity housing ordinance into place was really to incentivize the city's ability to help develop affordable housing. And what I'm, what we've witnessed, I think, over the past, I guess about year and a half is that it really has helped, but it's really worked at that higher AMI, the 60% AMI. I'm not, I can't recall right offhand one that was in that 20% or there might have been one that was lower than 60. So in general, I can, I am supportive of the idea to incentivize these, to incentivize the lower income units. I do, I, I'm not 100% certain on whether the numbers are right, but as Mr. Palermo pointed out, that we're continuing to work on this and it's the one thing I've been very happy to see over the years since we started this process is even as we were putting it in place, it changed so that it could meet the needs for the city. And so in general, I'll say at this point, I, I am supportive of the ordinance change in front of us. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I too am generally supportive. I think one of the things we talked about at the adoption of this ordinance was the intention for it to be, for lack of a better word, a lie, a living kind of ordinance that would be reviewed and modified, have the dials turned as we go. One of the things that I'm wishing we had more of in this, but I'm not really sure how we do it. At this point, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to putting forward what we have here. So please, so to say, don't take my comments as a, let's not do this right now. But we, we are doing some, we're offering more things to bring us into the lower affordability brackets, which is good. But what we are not doing as much of is then also offering more things to offer more units. So I get that, you know, there's this push-pull between, is it better to have 10 units at 30 or 20 units at 60? And there's no right and wrong answer, you know, you don't want to serve some and exclude others. On the other hand, I would hope that as we continue to refine this, that we are adding more things that also increase for, for more quantity or more percentage. Because we seem pretty much, with the exception of, I think, parking, we generally have said, you know, as long as you get 9%, that's going to be good enough for us. And I get I'm not a developer, I don't pretend to, to know the money in and out and I get that providing affordable within a market rate development is a challenge. I just would like to see us in the future be a yes and. So we want to, we want to, we want to encourage at the lower affordability thresholds, but I think we also want to, and encourage more quantity through similar things. So I don't know, that was probably a long roundabout way of saying the same thing three different ways, but generally, this is good work.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman, very, still good comments, good comments. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, I've been taking notes as we've been talking, so I'm going to just kind of go through it here. So I have to agree with the statements and just how this is a living document and I appreciate staff coming to us with updates on a periodic basis because that's really what I liked and appreciated about the, the, this program. One thing about the storage piece that I just, I, I think overall I can support, but I know we have, we had an influx of off-site storage here in the city. City council recently decided to do a study to see what off-site storage opportunities exist and, and really halt any new development of that. So one thing I think about is if we are taking that storage space reduction and putting that piece into this ordinance, how does that impact the off-site storage requirements? And, and these are both kind of in play. I don't know what type of person or resident uses those off-site storage and if that applies to these types of units, but just something that was sticking in the back of my mind when we were talking about reductions. And then the last thing that I just wanted to state, and, and this is starting to become more of a forefront for me, is I think this ordinance is great. We, we have, you know, the affordable housing, we're, we're getting more units and more types of, you know, units here, bringing in families. But one of the things I see that's moving here is really, how do we create this sense of community to draw people to come to live in Bloomington? Not just because they can afford to come to live to Bloomington. So thinking about walkability, parks, some types of amenities, you know, grocery or stores or cultural places for us to be a community. And I, I see we need to put more of that context in, into these types of programs so that we have people who want to come to live here, not just that they can afford to live here. And I'm not sure how to make that happen, but those are just kind of the three things that come into my mind when, when this was presented. But overall, I think it's great and I'll be in support.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. And, you know, I think that's, there's a bit of another thought that I had in this and really just the, as we increase the number of units or the affordability, the, the level of affordability, what you, something that struck me that you said is really community and that space. And I, I think about the reduction in space on a site. And one thing that our good Commissioner Corman is always talking about is what about the kids? What about the kids and where do they go? And maybe there's something we can have staff continue to look at with this opportunity housing ordinance in the future as to, maybe it is a site reduction, but it has to be in proximity to something else or so that our families that are moving to the community, not just for the affordable housing, but because there's parks very nearby or those sorts of things. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo Commissioner Roman's comments regarding both more units in the extremely affordable range, but also just a general increase in units overall. My understanding is that 9%, of any given building, if we do that, of, of every development that ever happens in the city of Bloomington, we still won't be at the units in which we need to be at to provide affordable housing to the folks, to meet the demand there. So I, I agree, I think the sheer amount is, is important here. And so that leads me to comments regarding folks like Mr. Higgins, which thank you for making comments, and, and companies and organizations who are really looking at Bloomington to develop and, and make an impact, bring in dollars to produce units overall and really having them at the table. And I know I wasn't a part of the original ordinance and the conversations there, but I do know that there's a lot of insight and things are changing in the development world regarding, you know, costs and the ability to actually get projects done. So just encouraging staff and this commission to keep that in mind. Because I, I do think that the iterative process of this ordinance is great, but I think that, you know, a more regular ability to take a look at this based on what's happening in the market is really important as well. Developers such as Mr. Higgins, who obviously is looking at sites in Bloomington, you know, can provide a lot of really great insight as he did today so that this can be a really useful tool to spur a lot of development and more production overall. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Chair. I first want to thank Commissioner Goldsman-
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I first want to thank, uh, Commissioner Goldsman's comments. I really, uh, it's not something that I personally think that we haven't, is really proposed when it comes, we, we care about the units coming, but not so much about once they come, what their life is like. So I really appreciate you bringing that comment to the table. Um, and I hope the city and whatever ordinance in the future of the programmatic stuff, um, would be considered to ensure families have, uh, walkable, um, services that they need that they could either walk to. And the parking reduction, I think, uh, after I, I heard that comment for me was, it assumes that a lot of folks would, um, you know, that the sites would be located in a good transit system. Then hopefully that would be part of the development review to ensure that if they are requesting parking reduction, thus be located in appropriate transit locations. Um, the need for open spaces, hopefully that could also be triggered once they are, um, reducing impervious service that, you know, they're likely not going to provide, um, you know, outdoor play areas and whatnot. But I really, that hit, uh, hard for me. And when I, when I heard that, it became personal because I want to make sure that families are, uh, getting beyond just housing once they come to Bloomington. Um, I would for staff, uh, just a feedback for me, when I was reading these through comments, it was hard for me to reference what was before, uh, so previous language. I know when we're talking about the storage language, um, um, we saw a, the language that was brought up by staff about what the current language is versus the amendments that is being proposed for the ordinance. It would be helpful to kind of see both, um, because I'm not too familiar and I cannot dig out where all these ordinances are currently in the current language. Um, I think it'd be helpful, like whenever we're proposing the ordinance, that we do see what the previous language was, is currently to what we are going to look at in terms of like what we're trying to adopt in the proposal. I think those are just some comments. I appreciate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Abdi. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you. Um, the comments, uh, by others reminded me of the, the other piece of my original, that, that item that actually led to my original questions was, yeah, the open space reduction. And, you know, it would be nice if we had some sort of a tie to, um, within a certain, again, not, hold this one up, but within a certain proximity to a park or a play area. And that was my main concern is, um, people who, uh, live in housing, especially multifamily housing, uh, having access to recreation, whether it's on the property or within a short distance, uh, recreation that is free of charge. And so, um, again, echoing what others said.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. All right, commissioners, um, oh, Commissioner Corman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just listening to all the comments and, um, as you made reference to that sense of community, you know, how important it is as the planners know, or when, when you're developing those, those type of plans to keep the needs of the community in mind. And when we talk about community, you know, all the people that make part of that community with all their different needs and all different ages and, um, you know, levels of life and experiences, cultures, et cetera. So keeping that in mind and, and I like how, um, staff continues to look at what, uh, what it's, what is best, what is needed to be changed accordingly to, to the times. And especially during this time, as we've gone through this pandemic and the pandemic is leaving so many things behind that are, we're going to be seeing for the years to come. Um, definitely think this is, this is very important when it comes to our youth, providing those spaces for our children and for, uh, families to, to feel attracted to Bloomington and to move here, uh, always keeping in mind also, eh, the, the needs of our teenagers. You know, our teenagers have gone, all of our kids have gone through a lot through this pandemic. Uh, but especially our teenagers are in a, in a very sensitive place right now. And if, if we can be, we can have a city that provides those type of spaces where they can feel where they, that they belong and that they want to stay and find the things that are, uh, recreational or activities or things that are, uh, fun for them to and stay, so that they stay here and don't go, um, to other cities or other places looking for, uh, ways to entertain, you know? If we can provide, uh, those type of spaces in, in areas where, uh, there can be also, um, educational opportunities or recreational opportunities, et cetera, that would be ideal. So, um, I am in support of this plan.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Corman.
Commendation. Thank you.
All right. Um, commissioners, any further discussion you'd like to have on this item? Um, or, uh, any changes? I guess, um, one of the things I think about, we talked a little bit about storage and, and Mr. Higgins' comments. Um, and if I am correct in part of this, it's, there is always an opportunity to, uh, ask for variances on top of, um, the standards, correct, uh, Mr. Markergard?
Sorry, I was muted. Mr. Chair of Commissioners, that is correct. Um, a developer could apply for or request additional flexibility above and beyond the incentives. Um, now there, if it's a variance, you would need to be able to make the findings. If it were planned development flexibility, there would need to be a public purpose, uh, for that flexibility. So, but the, you definitely can make that request.
Uh, okay. Um, just thinking about that, and, and I mean, I think what we don't know is the exact number in some of this, and I think there's concerns as, um, as Commissioner Goldsman, uh, reminded us all that we've had this other side of the house that really may or may not be affected, but we're seeing, um, these off-site storage facilities that were really grown in Bloomington. Um, I don't know if planning commission members have any other thoughts on that. Um, just wanted to make sure that we're kind of, um, that we're at least, uh, talking a little bit more about, um, Mr. Higgins's comments, so. Uh, Commissioner Corman, is your hand still up or did you have a new comment? Oh, nope. Hand was still up. All right. You're on mute, so you're okay. Uh, Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To your question, um, you know, I, um, certainly I trust Mr. Higgins' expertise in his field. Uh, and that, I think, I, you mentioned the, the, uh, I guess variance, I don't know if that's the right word, but the, um, you know, the ability to request a, a, a different threshold. Uh, one of the things that I, I strive for and it's, uh, it's a competing interest, right? When we're trying to help, uh, developers manage cost in order to provide more affordable units, I also strive, must strive as much as we can to ensure that the, the quality and the opportunity and the experience is as close to on par with other places in the community as well. So my preference is to not go farther than we are proposing here, but, um, much like some of the things that have come here, like the carport thing, for example, we've had two or three that have, um, requested to not have that. Um, and those of you who will recall, I have advocated that we not, uh, give on that at the beginning, but, uh, we find ourselves that the experience that the staff has found is that developers have said, this is an area that would be helpful and now we are revising our ordinance accordingly. So I think we are giving some in that direction. I would like to see how that plays out because again, I want us to, where we can advocate for things that are, uh, is comparable, uh, to elsewhere as possible because otherwise folks will potentially end up having to rent a storage facility. And if folks are really at the extremely low income and maybe they don't have a car, um, public transportation to our storage facilities are, are fine, but are you really going to be able to bring, uh, some sort of, I don't know what it might be? Uh, if you celebrate Christmas, are you going to really bring that artificial Christmas tree on the bus from the storage unit two miles down the road versus in your building? So, um, just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Appreciate those comments. Uh, any further comments from commission members? Otherwise I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Albrecht?
I just had one more thought in, and it's similar to what we were talking about with parks, which I like the idea of, you know, uh, open space reduction only if, you know, there was access to a park. Is there a way in which we, we can write the ordinance to suggest that if they, if the unit already has X number, X square footage of storage space in it, that somehow it's waived? Um, because I do, I agree with Commissioner Roman that, um, you know, we want to provide the same level of experience, but one unit's design is not the same as another unit's design. Some units have a lot of storage space, tons of closets, you know, huge closet, walk-in closet for every bedroom, and others don't. Um, and, and I don't know if that's been, that may have already been thought of, but I wonder if there's like some, some sort of pull that we could incorporate in that way. Um, not suggesting we do that right now, but just, just a thought.
Just a, yeah, uh, Commissioner Albre- or Commissioner Albrecht, I think, you know, great, uh, guidance for staff to continue looking at and developing. So thank you. All right. Again, uh, any further comments, um, or thoughts, commissioners? Looking for a, uh, motion if, uh, there's no further discussion. Commissioner Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2021-7, I move to recommend approval of the ordinance amendments as attached in the staff report related to preservation and development of affordable housing units, thereby amending chapter nine of the city code.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion and a second to recommend approval of an ordinance amendment as attached in the staff report related to preservation and development of affordable housing units, thereby amending chapter nine in the city code. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Motion passes. The opportunity housing, um, ordinance amendments. We'll move to City Council meeting on March 8th for a public hearing. And, uh, just a reminder, staff, you, you got those comments, some of the thoughts from planning commission. So I'm getting a head nod from Mr. Markergard. Um, all right. Now we'll move on to item number three for commission members, which is consider approval of the draft planning, planning commission synopsis of January 28th of 2021. And, uh, Commissioner Corman and Commissioner Goldsman, you were, two commissioners there were absent. Boy, my, uh, my lips are not working inside this mask right now. Um, I would, uh, entertain a motion. Commissioner Roman?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion to approve and commis- uh, looking for a second. Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve of the planning commission synopsis from January 28th, 21. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Epstein.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Corman?
Epstein.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes. Planning commission minutes from January 28th are approved. And that concludes our meeting for February 25th, 2021. Thank you very much.